...words not mine, is absolutely true. You further claim, Mr. Fithian, that, quote, "I think there's people in this room that helped put that together, that coaxed it on, that had speaking engagements together," end quote. This one had us all scratching our heads, but I think that I figured it out. Was it at the local Dems meeting out at the country club? That was an education-focused meeting that Bill Flock, the head of the Democratic Club, invited us to speak at, along with Dr. Couch and Trish McGee. I believe Trish couldn't make it, and I was the only representative from SOS who could. While I spoke with Dr. Couch at the meeting and sat with her at the dinner table, I'll remind you that I also spoke with and sat with Commissioner Pickram, with whom I had quite an enjoyable time. We actually are good at cracking jokes with each other when we're not in this room. You, on the other hand, refused to shake my hand, which I think was probably due to your not wanting to be called part of a conspiracy later on, and, as it turns out, I totally get that now. Ms. Short, last week you accused me of displaying rude behavior for jumping up during your comments and pleading with you to explain fund balance to Mr. Fithian. I know you actually understand it, but you haven't tried to correct him on his continued misrepresentation of the fund balance as some sort of shell game. You accuse me of rude behavior for walking out, and you accuse Rebecca of rude behavior and bad parenting for using a censored swear word on our Facebook page. All for this, I will 100% agree with you. We were rude. But we've been hammering at this for two years, and your response has consistently been, and continues to be, that we're too stupid to understand this stuff, so we need to sit down and be quiet. In that lovely civil and 100% not rude speech from Mr. Freysen that you were all singing the praises of last week, he mentioned the misogyny that you hear is coming from this bench. This might be part of what he's talking about. And he wasn't even there for that time, Billy, that you told Dr. Couch that she needed to march through the last down here and ask for money, just like everyone else. All right, ass, I'm sorry about that. Shouldn't say that here. We've apologized for Rebecca's language, and we hope that you'll apologize to Dr. Couch for yours. So in this context, you might see why an errant swear word got tossed in there, and none of us paid particular attention to it. We are women of action, and when we have to sit by and watch all of this inaction happening, it drives us a little crazy. You wouldn't believe the amount of swearing that we do in our own private chat string. Now, if everyone here thinks this whole charade is petty and stupid and a waste of time, let me tell you, I 100% agree. This is all keeping us from actually addressing the myriad problems this county has at hand, from flatlining revenues to the opioid crisis, to the hospital, to emergency services, and so on. Just imagine if at any of the many stops in this ride, you would look at us and ask yourselves, how can we put these sweeties to use? They have a lot of talent and energy and ideas and a way of reaching a constituency we aren't able to because we don't understand the Internet. Just imagine if any one of those times that we approached you, you would come prepared to hear our ideas on how to better market our county to families, how to better market our schools, how to better serve our families and kids who are already here. We wouldn't be here wasting everyone's time. We would be working together to do good for this county. Just imagine if last week, instead of telling us we should have our mouths washed out with soap, you could listen to Chris Hemstetter's pleas for you to come into her school and see what she was actually dealing with, and had taken her up on her offer, something none of you did, as far as I can tell. Jim Loth apparently met with her today and took a tour of the school. You spoke of being more neighborly and looking out for one another, and said that those of us who are Christian should understand that we are our brothers' keepers. We firmly believe that, too. We also believe that we are the keepers of our brothers' children, and of everyone's children. That's who we're doing all of this for. And if you think that washing our mouths out with soap is more important than giving the children in this county, our children, your neighbors' children, a top-notch education, then you are confusing your duties as commissioners. Believe it or not, this is my white flag. Everyone knows how things work around here, and saying you guys are great is the first step. Well, I'm saying it here. You guys are the greatest. You're so smart, and everything I've done up to now has been spiteful and mean and small. I will cop to it. This is my apology. So please now, pick up the phone and call Chris Hemstetter and visit Rock Hall Elementary, our school with the highest poverty rate. Please sincerely walk the halls with Brenda Rose at Garnett Elementary, our largest elementary school that had to absorb over 100 extra students after consolidation. Please go see Dr. Speer in the middle school and meaningfully discuss the ways in which you, as commissioners, can help her in the gargantuan task of making our middle school a place that defies expectations. It's too late to revisit your budget now, but it's not too late to actually support our teachers and schools. I'm happy to facilitate an informative visit or keep my mouth shut while you do it yourselves. Thank you very much, and thank you for allowing them to see their time.
There is a couple of things I'd like to make an exception to. Yes, I am on Facebook. I don't use it because I don't have time to do that, and I'm also very knowledgeable of Internet, how it works. IT, this is what I do, among other things. I am an engineer. And I also gave you an opportunity and made an offer to you when we had our conversation to review the county budget and expenditures, as well as the revenues, and make suggestions. Again, understand, this all has to balance in the end, and where to move money around. Always have that opportunity. Every citizen has that opportunity, and are encouraged to do that, to make those suggestions during the entire process. This is, every year, the county commissioners, before we came in office and will be done after we leave office, will struggle with balancing the needs and desires of the citizens of this jurisdiction, as well as the needs of delivering the services of county. The county, any governmental agency, any governmental organization, has a, really should have a mantra and a purpose of service-oriented, which is different in a business. Business is out there to make a profit, not government. So delivering the services to the citizens as best we know how and as best we can do. And that's what every, wherever you go in this country, any local government, that's what they try to do, is best they know how. It is difficult to weigh the desires and the wants versus what we can provide as far as support and serve. Many of our NGOs, non-governmental organizations whom we provide some support to, have asked for increases in our funding. We are unable to accommodate that and still meet everything, all the other needs of the county. The State Highway Administration, I'll talk about our county roads, the State Highway Administration considers the roads here that are maintained by the county some of the best in the state. It takes a lot of effort, even with loss a few years ago of 90% of the state's support and funding. We still manage to do good by our citizens, and we don't have a whole lot of potholes. You may have a pothole every now and then, but we get on that right away. But we have a limited staff, we have limited funds to do all this. And coupled with that, we already know that this coming year, the cost of stone, for example, is increasing. We would love to be able to have asphalt roads in the county. The reason that a lot of them are tarantip because it's cheaper, in essence, it's cheaper. We can get more done that way. But there are a lot of other things. We have a community center that, by far, the most modern and the best pool complex on the eastern shore. It is phenomenal. When it was being built several years ago, each town in the county said, "Why don't you build it in my town?" Well, it's in Wharton because that is, in theory, the geographic center of the county. So doing a budget is a very daunting task, and all three of us, if I may speak for my colleagues, try to do the best we know how. We do listen. I am the first vice president of the Maryland Association of Counties, which is an organization in the state that comprises all county governments, including Baltimore City. If re-elected, I'll be the president of that association. So we all are not here to reinvent the wheel, so we take suggestions from not only our citizens, but also from other county governments, and how they do things. We spend a lot of time going to conferences for the Maryland Association of Counties, where we can share ideas, the way we do things, talk to other governmental officials to see how they do things. That's how come we came up with the idea of maybe we could share the Queen Anne's County's county ride to expand into Kent County, so that we can improve our transportation offerings. So those are the things that come about from looking what's on the other side of the hill, what's going on, and around the country. We're also a member of the National Association of Counties, so we get ideas from every place, as well as our citizens. So we are cognizant of some dissatisfaction with parts of the budget, but can't, one woman told me a while ago, sometimes if you can piss off everyone equally, you're doing a good job. That's not our purpose here. We're hopefully like to try to satisfy everyone equally. Unfortunately, because of the financial realities, that may not be possible. Okay? That's all I got to say. Okay, Nathan Troyer?
Jody Bortz still wants to talk. She's shaking her head back there.
Oh, Jody?
Hi, I'm Jody Bortz. I've been here before, so I'm not going to tell you all that stuff. I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you to all the people that came out after last week's meeting to support our schools, all the people that wrote letters to the commissioners. I know that everything mostly got boiled down to opined in the minutes, but it really did mean a lot to the community to see people standing up and supporting teachers, and us personally, from nonprofits to our business leaders. I wanted to address one thing that you just said about opening up the books. The budget only tells us where the money is, it's not telling us where the waste is. An efficiency study is going to tell you more than, do you understand what I'm talking about?
Talking about, and that's not necessarily accurate.
Okay, because I'm talking about pieces of equipment that, according to the minutes that I've read, get used maybe 30 days a year that are costing us $10,000 a year to own. Is that the best way to use that money? Those are the kinds of things I'm looking for, but that's not going to be in the budget, that's going to be in the use logs. So what I'm talking about is much more detailed than that, something I used to do professionally, and it's not just as simple as coming in and sitting down with Pat Merritt for an afternoon. You need to get somebody in here to look at that stuff. So that's all I have to say. Thank you to the community.
Nathan, still here? Oh, Carla, Sonya, I've never seen your signature before.
If you notice what I put down, in terms of what the topic was going to be, it was moving on. The budget is the budget, obviously. The SOS group's not going to go away, they're going to haunt you for the next year. Trish McGee gave a lovely speech this morning that was covered in the paper. Board of Education is going to work as hard as it possibly can, they're not going to go away. Dr. Couch, I don't know how she gets up in the morning some days, but she certainly has given her all. There are some things I think that we can do, and when you have a chance to read this report, the Thornton and the Kerwin Commissions have been working very hard on what can we do to improve funding and what can we do with the enormous number of children in the state of Maryland who are at poverty level. In this particular article that appeared in the Baltimore Sun this morning, one of the things that the article was encouraging people to do was to reach out to the gubernatorial candidates, to see that they would actively support the recommendations in the Kerwin Commission. One of the things I would like to see happen as a result of all of this energy is that you, as county commissioners, would take a leadership role in making Kent County schools the best schools in the state of Maryland. Now, this is going to mean really taking an active role in the state. Billy, you have been endorsed by Governor Hogan, I would certainly hope that you will be reaching out to Governor Hogan to make sure that he is incorporating the recommendations of the Kerwin Commission in what we do as a state government. The voices of local government make a difference. The candidates that were at the Republican League of Women Voters last night, all of them basically indicated they would be supporting a strong school budget. Mr. Pickram and Mr. Fithian, you've been involved in democratic politics for a very long time. You know everyone. You know everyone through your county government group, Mako and Naco and all of that. I would love to think that you would take a leadership role in the state of Maryland. I would like to think that you, if you're going to be the next president of Mako, that you would make that a primary thing that you would seek to do, to make certain that we have funding, and that you would make a stated goal that Kent County schools will be the best schools in the state of Maryland. I think that if we felt you had that banner, you were out there every time you went to a meeting, every time you had the opportunity to bend the ear of a state legislator, or a governor, or Peter Francho, or any of the million people who come in here all the time to tell us all the wonderful things they're going to do, but if you did it, each and every one of you did it, and you spoke, and you had the opportunity to tell the stories, that's the one thing the SOS group, I think, is encouraging you to do that I would encourage you to do. Go out and go to the schools and talk to these people, and share the story. There may not be a great deal you can do right now. The budget is the budget, as you've said. There is a great deal that you can do in this next year. There is a great deal that you can do in taking a leadership role, and I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Darren Tillman?
Did I get the ground set right? Okay. Good.
Thank you, I'm Darren Tillman. Oh, I just, I wish that I were feeling outpouring of excitement from you. I have been in several communities, and I've never seen such engaged citizens. I would love to see you, as leaders, maybe not harness, but make use of some of this great energy. So three thoughts along those lines. Be collaborative. Get these meetings with the private sector. You know how to do this, as Carla was saying, both with the political ties that you have and with your connections in this community. If funding the schools is a priority, we can do it together. There's so much passion in your community, in this room. Every time I've been in here, let's put that to work for our common goal, which we should not lose sight of, having fantastic schools for everyone. But also, so be collaborative, be reasonable. Please don't publicly accuse your superintendent of playing a shell game. That message resonates from this bench. Make sure that the things you say are reasonable. Don't expect anyone else to step in and fund the schools when it truly is the county's job to do so, not Washington College or any other entity. If our county has the smallest contribution rate in the state of its budget to the schools, we have to take ownership of that. And please be leaders. You know, when you run the plant, this is just to echo Robbie and Carla and Chris Hemstetter, please also walk the floor. You can be out there waving the banner, I think you must, but you must also see what's going on, so that you can put all of your knowledge and connections to work to solve those problems in the schools. If there's something that could be solved through private sector collaboration in the schools, you would be great resources for identifying that, but you have to go hear what the needs are, so please do that. Please, let's continue our dialogue without shame or deflection. Let's keep talking, as Carla said, let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Anywhere? All right. Jennifer. Jennifer, see? Jennifer Baker.
Okay, I'm switching topics on it, guys.
Jennifer, give me, it's hard to read.
No, I'm short.
I can't even read my own writing, so.
Okay, I'm short, so I'm just going to be loud. So I have listened, oh, there we go, thanks, guys. I have listened and watched all of the various hearings from the comfort of my living room, and I have to start off by saying, I think that every single person in this room faces the incredible challenge every day of achieving more with less. So we all have an income, we're all trying to achieve more in our lives, and we're all trying to save and grow to get there. And last night, I had the privilege of attending the Board of Education meeting to talk about a new program to help kids have access to personal care products, kids who don't have access to those things in their homes. And while I was there, I had the opportunity to learn a bit more in detail about the school budget and just how desperate the situation is over the next several years. And it made me start to think, much like Carla is, that the budget is the budget. We have the money that we have today, but that doesn't mean that we can't start planning very aggressively toward tomorrow, and think about ways to address the gap, to get us from good to average. And by average, I mean average on par with the rest of the school districts in the state of Maryland. And it particularly concerns me as a business owner and the owner of two businesses in our community, because one of the greatest challenges John and I have faced, other than our ability to meet and adapt the ebb and flow of people coming into the community to consume, is our ability to find staff, because there aren't enough young people. And by young people, I mean people my age and about 10 years younger, so people in their early twenties through late thirties who just need a job to come into our business every day and work. And that, to me, signals a greater compounding challenge of attracting young families, attracting young people who can find work here, and it also, to me, signals a potential for attracting our next business. So I think, Mr. Pickram, you very eloquently said that the government isn't a business, but yet when we solve non-business problems like a business, it may give us the opportunity to not only identify and reduce waste, but it may also get us to think a bit differently about budgeting and saving, about how we attract the next Dixon and Lamont and capitalize on the wonderful fiber program that has been put in place here in our county, and also think about how we market and recruit to these next businesses that we're going to need to come here, so that we can not only improve our budget through all of our taxes, but also through attracting new businesses here. And I just simply want to get the point across that John and I moved here four years ago, and we are both business strategists by background. And what sealed the deal for Chestertown and Kent County was that the town of Chestertown had a comprehensive strategy and a plan. It had a design for a marina, it had a college, it had a public arts master plan, it had strategies that let us know that even though it was kind of okay today, that it was working really, really hard at being something incredibly great. And I feel like that's Kent County in a nutshell. There's this wonderful fiber program, there's this incredible vibrant arts community. Rock Hall is achieving all kinds of accolades as a community right now. We're getting written up in various magazines. It feels like we're right on the cusp of something even more, and if we can start to solve the problem of being underfunded in core areas that young people look at, we might be able to attract the next Dixon, Lamont, Jen and John, or any number of families here in this room who've brought businesses here. And so while the budget is the budget today, that doesn't mean that starting tomorrow we can't try and work towards something different, so that we can solve the economic problem of bringing the next business or the next family here. Thank you, and thank you for all of your willingness to work with us.
Again, I like to, personally, that I like to thank everyone for their comments. I listen very carefully to what you say, how you say it. It has been, since I have been in office and working with Billy and Ron, always looked at how to make this county even better than it is. Now, don't get me wrong, when I go about the state of Maryland and any other environments, I have no qualms of saying that we have the best school system, far as I'm concerned, not only in Maryland, but on the east coast. There's no doubt in my mind about that. We are, all three of us, are products of Kent County Public Schools. I was a product of Kent County Public School when it was a different school system and not as inclusive, I'll say that much, okay? But that was, that's part of our history. It is, I survived that, with difficulty, but I did survive. But I think, sometimes I think that many citizens misinterpret questions that the commissioner may have about a particular program. We ask the same questions about our parks and rec and roads and detention center and the sheriff's office. We have to look at things with a critical eye. It does not mean that any one of us is opposed to that particular thing. If we're opposed to it, my colleagues will say so, and I so will, I. But we have to ask those critical questions. That's part of being a county commissioner, to ensure that your dollars, and my dollars too, are spent appropriately by every particular governmental organization. I've said from this seat many times that I have confidence that we have the best educational staff available around. I wish they were highly paid. Some of my best friends are teachers in other jurisdictions around the nation. I think it's a shame that, as a profession, we do not value, as a society, our educators. And I value that because of our training in economics, we value things by what they're paid. We don't pay them, I'll see how to say this, without being enough, say it this way. I do believe that, I don't believe a teacher should have to come out of his or her pocket to buy teaching materials. And it's done every day, especially in primary grades. I don't believe that you look at a teacher, yeah, they only work nine months a year. No, they don't. They work more than that. And they, during the year, they even work many hours after school. No one else, you can't work for Dixon Valve, or Raytheon, or General Motors, unless you're in management, take home, work home, and still have to do lesson plans and grades and all the other minor things that our educational professionals have to do. But that said, it is incumbent upon our elected school board to allocate the funds they have available to the best way they can get the bang, best bang for the buck. Personally, I think you pay your people first, and then you fill out the other program. But that's not my job. That's the school board's job to do that. If it's a priority that we have teachers' compensation, I'll just say teachers' compensation, that are on par with many other counties in the state of Maryland, then that's a decision that they have to make. That's not made from this office, this desk. Enough of my speechifying.
I would like to ask if we could go into executive session to talk about an insurance issue, and so forth.
Form.
about pending or potential litigation.